Mr. Block.
Here.
Ms. Ford.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Iketa.
Here.
Mr. Onishi.
Excuse?
Mr. Pilago.
Here.
Ms. Smart.
Here.
Mr. Shimoto.
Here.
Chair Yagong.
Here.
Chair Yagong, you have eight members present.
It's the chair on here.
Thank you, ma'am. Oh, let the record show that Mr. Onishi is present as well. Thank you, ma'am, clerk. Um, Mr. Pilago, could you please lead us in the pleasantries? Thank you very much, Mr. Pilago. Now, students, at this point in time, what we would really do is give certificates, which we do have people here today to provide to. I do know you folks have to leave at 9:10 actually to go to your next scheduled appointment. So did you want to leave now, um, Barbara, or did you want to stay for the presentation? It'll probably take about 10 minutes or so. Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Uh, with that said, council members, we're going to call on Ms. Brenda Ford to come forward to provide certificates of, uh, appreciations this morning.
I'm going to call six, three, six, four. First three that I will be calling will be Chelsea Potashie. And four, Wayne Latsui. Roldine Raiders. I have taken it upon myself to commend officers in the Hawaii County Police Department in Kona who made the most driving under the influence of an intoxicant arrests. Every quarter, we make this presentation to the officers, and, um, these particular officers are part of the first quarter group. They were unfortunately off duty, and I'm sorry, off, on duty the last time. They could not be here to receive their commendations, and so I wanted to have them come back and publicly be acknowledged for their work. We have the highest DUI crash and crash-related fatality rates in the United States of America in this county. People think they can drink and drive, and if we're killing our families, our neighbors, and our friends by engaging in that activity. So this is part of my, not only commendation to the police department and these particular officers, this is an educational event to hopefully slow down the DUI driving rate. So these commendations, I'll read this one. "The Hawaii County Council hereby presents this certificate to these three officers, a commendation for community safety, the most arrests for DI, DUI, and alcohol-impaired driving in the first quarter of 2012. On behalf of the Kona community, Hawaii County Council would like to recognize these officers of the Kona Patrol for improving the safety of the Kona community." A total of three, I believe, for each one of you. Um, arrests for driving under the influence were made during the first quarter of 2012. Alcohol-impaired driving is responsible for more than half of the traffic deaths on the island of Hawaii. Alcohol-impaired driving deaths and injuries are preventable. The Hawaii County Council thanks you for your contribution to the safety of our community and our island, and for your commitment to protect and serve. Congratulations on being recognized for the most DUI arrest made in Kona during the first quarter of 2012. Thank you. Let's give them a big hand. Officers along with the entire police department are here to protect and serve, and getting this scourge to our community that's killing your friends in high school and, um, our loved ones in the community, um, needs to be, uh, addressed, and the police department is stepping up to this, especially in Kona where we've made it a priority. Thank you so very much for your constant efforts to make our community safe. Thanks again. Okay, and then Mr. Davis is not here right now. Jason Foxworthy. I just went to the Officer of the Year luncheon, or at the hotel. Mr. Foxworthy was one of the, um, officers that received, um, one of the monthly commendations and was up for the, the annual award. Are you the one that did the, uh, you were up for which one of the awards? I mean, your arrest included a physical altercation, is that correct? Officer Foxworthy went to the scene of a fight, and, and the fight was not stopping. One guy was ready to stop, and the other guy wanted to take on the police officer next. And this officer, who's got some training in martial arts, got into a physical confrontation and tried to handcuff the person. It turned out to be a mixed martial arts master, was he a master? Yeah, he was, he fought professionally, and this officer not only took, took him six minutes, but he not only got him down and handcuffed and hauled off to the hoosgow, but he got this guy out of the brawl that was going on. So I wanted to commend you for that, too. Thank you so much, officer. I would have been running in the other direction. Okay, let me try the commendation. "The Hawaii County Council hereby presents this certificate to Jason Foxworthy, commendation for community safety for the most arrests for alcohol-impaired driving, second quarter of 2012. On behalf of the Kona community, the Hawaii County Council would like to recognize Police Officer Jason Foxworthy of the Kona Patrol for improving the safety of the Kona community. Officer Jason Foxworthy made a total of seven driving under the influence DUI arrests in the second quarter of 2012. Alcohol-impaired driving is responsible for more than half the traffic deaths on the island of Hawaii. Alcohol-impaired driving deaths and injuries are preventable. The Hawaii County Council thanks you for your contribution to the safety of our community and our island, and for your commitment to protect and serve." Way beyond the call of duty. "Congratulations on being recognized for the most DUI arrests made in Kona during the second quarter of 2012. Mahalo Newe Ho'opon. Are any of the other officers here, any of the officers of the month? Okay, okay, thank you, officer. Thanks a lot. Stay out of trouble, okay? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Yes? Huh? Oh, can I have all the officers come back and get the picture taken up here with the council? Officer Foxworthy, I'm going to go around and stand with the council, so thank you very much. Thank you, officers. We'll get a quick picture.
Why don't we get sent here? Uh, politicians like to take pictures, ladies and gentlemen, we do. Now, I know the students have to leave at this time, but before we do, I do want to acknowledge Mayor Billy Kenoi and his administration and his staff for helping to put this together. I know you're in for a wonderful day. Thank you, Barbara. Thank you very much for, for working to put this together. Again, thank you, students, for coming. I think you folks should move on to your next, um, place now, but thank you for being here this morning. Aloha. Welcome. The Hawaii County Council is still, um, uh, in session at this particular time, so what we're going to do is check with our sites to see if we have any testifiers. Let's begin out in Waimea. Good morning, Dave. Any testifiers out in Waimea?
Uh, good morning, Chair Yagong. We do not have any testifiers this morning.
Okay, thank you very much, Dave. Uh, good morning, Barbara, out in Pohone. Any testifiers out in Pohone?
Good morning. No, Mr. Chair, we have no testifiers this morning.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, who's out in Hilo? Uh, any testifiers out in Hilo?
Good morning, Chair Yagong. We have four testifiers in Hilo.
Okay, Nora, is that you?
Uh, no, it's me, Liz.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, thank you, Liz. I, sorry, couldn't hear over the, uh, the noise of the, uh, uh, session here. So we got Liz out in Hilo. Thank you. Four testifiers, Liz?
We have five now.
Five, okay, very good. Why don't we begin with you, if you could bring your first two testifiers to the table? And we'll begin with Hilo, and then we'll come here to Kona. We only have, uh, one testifier here in Kona.
Okay, our first testifier is Ms. Cory Harding, to speak on Bill 266 Draft 3 and Resolution 297 Draft 2, to be followed by Ann Olson.
Okay, thank you. Isn't enough staff closing the doors, please, and we appreciate it? Thank you. Um, Cory, before you begin, uh, hold on one second. We're going to be closing the doors here, so, uh, we can hear the testimony. Thank you very much for your patience. Thank you very much, staff. So we have five testifiers in Hilo and one here in Kona. Going to introduce your first testifier, Liz. Thank you very much.
Our first testifier is Ms. Cory Harding, speaking on Bill 266 Draft 3 and Resolution 297 Draft 2, to be followed by Ann Olson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, speaking in opposition to Bill 266 about agricultural tourism. I want to thank you guys for revising the bill and promoting the hearing, but I'm still concerned about rural roads and neighborhoods being overwhelmed, and I'm concerned about getting more tourism than agriculture, so I'm opposed to this. On Resolution 297 about Helco and avoided costs, and their support of that, I ask that when Helco does their October 17 council presentation, that you please balance it with presentations by the renewable energy producers and by Henry Curtis of Life of the Land about how to cut rates. Ten days ago, a Hilo man suffered burns and smoke inhalation, a woman was injured, and a house had hundreds of thousands of dollars in damage from a fire started by a candle. A relative said the man was using candles and generators after going off the grid because of Helco's high rates. In August and September, Helco ran full-page newspaper ads, blaming high rates on avoided cost contracts with independent power producers, but there's no way to find out if the contracts are really to blame. Helco has declined to reveal its specific power costs, says Big Island Now. Henry Curtis of Life of the Land says, "If you look at avoided cost contracts at the Public Utilities Commission, all the pricing information is redacted, and even if it was visible, there's so many conditions and pricing variations, it's nearly impossible for the layperson to understand." In 2011, Henry Curtis wrote Senate Bill 656 to require the Public Utilities Commission to publish contracts, including price information, for the purchase of renewable energy by energy utilities on a publicly accessible portion of the commission's website. The bill was supported by some interesting people. Toiri Power, one of the producers, flame by Helco, the Public Utilities Commission, the Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism, and indigenous consultants. It was opposed by Hawaiian Electric Company and did not pass. A 2006 report funded by the Kohala Center says many independent power producers believe the ability to offer discounted rates closer to their marginal costs would enable them to sell and produce more clean electricity. Helco adds, "Don't mention that Constance Lau, CEO of Helco's parent company, Hawaii Electric Industries, has a salary of over $800,000, and total compensation from all sources of over $5 million." The, these eight Helco ads, by the way, under normal advertising rates, together would have cost over $30,000. Helco wants a rate hike that will push bills up more than $8 a month for the average home, but on our island, almost one in five people lives in poverty, and almost one-third of the families statewide who sought federal help with electric bills last year were from our island. We can't bring rates down when we're kept in the dark about why they're so high. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Let's go ahead and introduce your next testifier, and before you do, if I could have John Doris to come forward to the table, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Liz.
Okay, our next testifier is with Ann Olson, speaking on Resolution 295.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you again for considering this resolution. I just wanted to let you know that I was here, and if there's any questions or information I can provide, I'd like to do that.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Olson, for being here this morning. Thank you. Let's move here to, uh, Kona. We have Mr. John Doris, and he's going to speak on Resolution 301.12-12, and also Bill 306 and Bill 266. Good morning, sir.
Thank you, good morning. And, uh, actually, I didn't plan to talk on the other two until I just heard other people talking on them. But on 30112, I'd like to thank the County Department of Water Supply, uh, Representative Pilago, and everyone else involved in, uh, pushing this through. We've been waiting a long time. Uh, I own a piece of property in, uh, uh, Kona Ocean View, the state's AKA Houkola subdivision for over 30 years. Uh, it's the first home my wife and I built, and, um, uh, I can say that living on a water tank for 30 years, or having a water tank for 30 years, is not good. It, uh, grow mosquitoes like crazy. A lot of the water tanks out there are uncovered, and, uh, it is a health hazard. Whatever lands on your roof and, uh, ends up on your roof, ends up in your water, and there's no way to get it out. So, uh, getting this water system online and going and putting that out for me as quickly as possible, we really appreciate it. Uh, considering the other two, and, um... The first one is the, uh, and I apologize, Ms. Smart, because I'm one of those guys that's, uh, grown up and lived in Hawaii all my life. I grew up in Kalii Valley, and, um, anybody that lived on Kalii Street towards the upper end of the valley knows that the whole side of Kalii Street was a dumping zone. That's where people that were, uh, either financially not able to, or too lazy to, or for whatever reason, would not go to the dump, which was free. So there would be refrigerators and garbage and all kinds of stuff on the side of Kalii Street, which was real sad, because Kalii Valley is a very beautiful, beautiful valley, and it had garbage piled up along it. I now live in Honolulu, and in the section, which is real sad, because it's a section that belongs to the Queen Lily of Kalani Trust, a piece of land up there that no one lives on, and it's, uh, a long stretch of land. People consistently are dumping their opala on the side of the road, because they're either too lazy, or it's too far, or it's too expensive, and drive down to the dump where they can dump it for free. If we start charging, what's going to happen is the opala is going to be piling up on the side of the road. That's what's going to happen. Uh, I've seen it happen on the mainland. I've been to places like in Michigan where to go to any dump site, you have to pay, and what happens is you see these yards in, uh, uh, areas where the whole yard is just full of garbage. Uh, the other one that I wanted to testify on was relative to the, uh, agricultural tourism. Uh, several years back, under, in Mayor Kim, agricultural tourism was pushed and allowed on, uh, in Honolulu, along the Mauna Loa Highway, and several, uh, businesses were established and, uh, allowed to establish stores and all kinds of commercial ventures on agricultural land. Uh, the promise that we had was that, oh, don't worry, they're only going to use the small buses. They're only going to use the small vans. There's nothing in place. There's no line place that keeps Jack's Tours from showing up with one of their huge buses, which they do every single day. They show up with a Jack's Tour bus almost every single day, driving along the highway, going to one of those establishments and dropping off the tourists. So what they promised beforehand and what happens, uh, are two different things, and there's no enforcement thing, there's nothing involved in terms of enforcement. There's nobody to enforce it. So if you're going to promote agricultural tourism on roads that do not meet standard, which means that the, the lanes don't even, they're not 12 feet, some of, some of the areas, if two buses met, they would, they would have, one would have to back up. And if you're going to do that, then you'd have to come up with some kind of regulation that stops these guys from running the big tour buses. That's it. Thank you. And it has to be an enforceable regulation, something that is going to cost them like 500 bucks for the citation, not 25 bucks.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony, sir. Uh, here in Kona, I need to call on Kelly Greenwell to come forward. Sigrid will be speaking on Resolution 289 in support.
Well, it's nice to be back.
Good morning, good to see you, Ken.
Fortunately, for a short period of time. I would like to read into the record, uh, what I've handed out. And let me begin by saying, by most accounts, the long-term economic well-being of Kona, the Big Island for that matter, appears to be rather bleak. With agriculture in decline due to market forces, disease, drought, the visitor industry near saturation, and significant manufacturing unrealistic, the only real opportunity for the future is education. The University of Hawaii has made significant strides toward this end, but that effort is not sufficient to sustain extended economic viability. To be effective, the university's work in Hilo must be coupled with a vastly expanded mission towards situating this island at the center of intellectual achievement. What is being called for is a regeneration of the thinking that sparked the East-West Center, a vision to include tropical agriculture, marine biology, and ocean science, international law, civics, and humanities, vital technology and systems engineering, and further, putting us on the map as the premier place for intellectual discovery. This is the essence of what Mrs. Ford is advocating through Bill 289, and I sincerely hope the entire council will back her effort. Unanimity on the vote for this bill supporting a parallel but independent component to the work of the University of Hawaii with an expanded agenda for the future will dramatically facilitate the procurement of federal monies needed to get the ball rolling. It's the kind of project that will appeal to the federal mandates, which will occur in the future as the U.S. economy gets back on track. Please support Ms. Ford with this legislation, as it will spawn sustainability, not only for us, but for the planet as well. I, I, I really feel that, Ms. Ford, thank you very much for bringing this forward. This is so essential to our future. If you really look at where we're going to be 10 years, 20 years down the road, technology giving us the kinds of opportunities that it will, uh, this is really an area that we could dominate. So let's do it. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Let's move back to Hilo. Liz, your next testifier, please.
Okay, our next testifier is Mr. Sam Cooper, speaking on Bill 178.
Good morning.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning, County Council. Good morning, good morning, County Council, and thank you for your time. Regarding rezoning Bill 178, RS 10 to RM 3, TMK 3-2-0 38:17. Our Kinooli Street neighborhood from Koeweli Street to Poinaco Street wants this zoning to be denied. Traffic endangered to the public safety is the main reason. The road is narrow, there are no sidewalks, and people can walk and bike for safety. The old-time residents who have lived here for 60 years or more think it is a bad sight. Another thing to consider is how unsafe the apartment complex would be for the tenants entering and exiting the complex and walking and riding bikes down the street. Another 90, the maximum amount of people that could reside at the complex, plus their car, their guests, and the 34 cars, will increase the danger to all. Everyone agreed that sidewalks be installed and a crosswalk at Oea Street with flashing lights be installed before any more development of this kind be granted other than single-family dwellings. Public safety and our quality of life for all is what our neighborhood strives for. Perhaps the entire county council should take a walk as a group on Kinooli Street from Koeweli to Poinaco, walking down on both sides of the street around 4 o'clock PM or so, to see for yourself how unsafe Kinooli Street is, and to also take a look at how unsafe the ingress and egress of the site is. The petition you have states our position. There are 82 signatures on the petition. I was able to visit maybe half of the homes as people were gone or the property was fenced and gated. I made a map that shows, that shows Kinooli Street from Koeweli Street to Poinaco, that shows where the 35 homes are located. The map did not show the rest of the properties. The site is a problematic site, drainage, ingress and egress, old growth trees on the property line, noise and nuisance for all. Phase one of University Village being completed in 2013 with 300 beds, which sits on five acres of the 33-acre site, five more phases could be built in the near future, so there may be another 1,500 beds in the addition to the 300. So the apartments are not that critical for student housing. This is not student housing, and yes, in the future, since it is an apartment complex, it could become Section 8 for low-income housing. Some people need to show a loss for tax reasons, and also tax credits and other types of credits are given by the different government entities. In regards to property value, the closer to the complex, the more the property value will drop. Another factor for student...
Sir, I need you to summarize, sir, please. I need you to summarize.
Uh, in summary, our neighborhood does not want this development due to, um, what the petition states. And I'm hoping Mr. Onishi, as our county councilman, will honor our wishes and deny this rezoning. We elected you to keep our neighborhood safe and residential. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your testimony, sir. Um, Liz, before you introduce your next testifier, if I could ask Polly Minch to come forward, please? Uh, go ahead, Liz.
Okay, our next testifier is Mr. Paul Boklarowicz, speaking on Bill 306.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning, Councilman Yagong. This is about the, uh, pay-as-you-throw system that's being introduced. Last spring, I observed the inaugural high school council vote unanimously to adopt a pay-as-you-throw system for waste disposal for Hawaii county residents. Uh, previously, I submitted a, uh, a link to the Recycle Hawaii website, a document compiled by Recycle Hawaii in 1999, Rural Community Pay As You Throw: Recommendations on Development Community-Based Rural Pay As You Throw System. Uh, it's available as a free download from the archive publication section of the website. It's replete with recommended ordinance changes to be considered in the development of such a program, uh, and I think the plan deserves to be revisited and updated when considering this option, which is found within the current County of Hawaii Integrated Resources slash Solid Waste Management Plan. The plan also addresses the issue of illegal dumping. Every community that has adopted the pay-as-you-throw Every community that has adopted the pay-as-you-throw system has experienced a spike in illegal dumping. However, when combined with continual public education, the amount of illegal dumping levels off once the program gets well-established and accepted by the community. I applaud the unanimous affirmation by the students who comprised the inaugural Hawaii High School Council in their foresight in dealing with rubbish as resources as opposed to waste. Within the pay-as-you-throw plan is the built-in incentive to recycle resources in that the more resources extracted for recycling, the smaller the bill to residents for using landfill space. That is, there is, conceivably, would be no cost to residents who recycle recoverable materials. The trend towards zero waste is the driving force behind such a program where we eliminate tons of materials now going to the landfills in favor of recycling and reusing in order to recover valuable resources. If you are not for zero waste, how much waste are you for?
Thank you very much, sir. Thank, thank you very, thank you for your testimony, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, let's move back here to Kona, uh, Mr. Polly Minch to speak on, uh, Resolution three oh one. Good morning, sir.
My name is Polly Minch. Uh, I've been a resident of a subdivision for twenty-plus years. Uh, I'm one of the few lucky ones that got a water meter a bunch of years back. So I, you know, I help my neighbors out and give water to neighbors. But my line itself crosses a lot of crossways that aren't on, it's not a legal line. Uh, anytime anybody wants, they can tell me, take that thing out. And then they and all the neighbors all surround me like, I water, it's the outlet. Uh, not to mention that neighbors are running hoses and, you know, you could see the picture. Uh, it's not a good situation. Our subdivision's in a dry area of Kona. It doesn't rain enough to really, I mean, water tanks are constantly empty. Uh, and then every year I hold my breath because you have the big, all, they can land below us, you have, they can land to the south. And I'm just waiting for that map to go, you know, and the fire to come up here and no fire hydrants. The best they're gonna do is, is keep the fire from spreading down our subdivision, you know? We're, we're gonna get on fire, that's gonna be it. Thank God it hasn't happened, you know, but each year it's another year. And not to mention that the water tanks, they are, they are clean, especially when it doesn't rain a lot, you know? You don't really have the first flush systems on it because a little bit of rain you got, you wanna catch it, right? And it's, it's just a bad thing all the way around. And, uh, I really support this resolution. We need water. It's been a long time, and I do appreciate all of you folks' efforts to help us. And I hope, I hope it goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your testimony. We have one more testifier here in Kona that will go back to Hilo. If I could have Josh Fletcher to come forward. And Mr. Fletcher would also be speaking on Resolution three oh one. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Uh, thanks again for all your persistence and work through with this and helping us get water. I've lived, uh, my wife and I live in the neighborhood about four years now. Uh, so apparently you're the neighborhood, but, uh, uh, a few of us here this morning are just, uh, I think the majority in the neighborhood who really need, uh, water. I think we're the last subdivision in Kona that does not have, uh, county water. Uh, so something we need, we don't have fire hydrants, we don't have any of that, um, so, yeah, fire would definitely be a issue if we were to come through our neighborhood at all. Uh, because we are surrounded, we're kind of out on the dry side of Kona, surrounded by a lot of bush and trees and vacant lots. So, um, yeah, I'm definitely in support of it. And I appreciate your time and effort in helping us.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir, for your testimony. We have no more testifiers here in Kona, so let's go to Hilo. Go ahead, Liz, your next testifier, please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, our next testifier is Miss Carrie Marks, speaking on bill two six six draft three, three oh six, two eight six draft two, and reso two nine seven draft two.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Um, first, I'm gonna go in order of the agenda. Resolution two nine seven twelve is urging Helco to renegotiate all its power purchase agreement contracts. I think that's a great idea. Anything that would help bring down our Helco bills would be awesome. Um, I would also, though, like to make sure that somebody compels Helco to attend the October seventeenth meeting, as they've been asked to do. They've been known to blow off meetings in the past. They were all here for the committee meeting before, but I don't see any of them in the audience now. So let's make sure they get a letter and respond to it. If you'd like, you can walk it across the hall. They're having an energy advisory commission at ten thirty in the Puna conference room. So, um, strongly support this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Yoshimoto, for putting this up and putting it out there for the people to talk about. Um, but in addition to the independent power producers, I think it would be nice to know what their costs are for everything. Basically, they can just do whatever they want to do and bill us for it. They can build lines, they can build transformer stations, they can build whatever they want and charge us for it. So I would also like you to look at those costs, if possible. That would be awesome. Mahalo for that. Next item is bill two eighty-six, which is which one? Relating to the disposal of commercial cooking oil, waste, and fats and oils and greases. That's awesome. I think that all of that oil going into the landfill is terrible, and if we can turn it into energy, that would be great. I would also like to throw in the idea that you promote household cooking oil and grease be disposed somewhere. If there was someplace like at the transfer station by the recycling bins or something where people could drop off their cooking oil, that would be great. Because I'll tell you what, I know for a fact that most of it goes in the drain. Um, I worked at the community crisis shelter here. It was a five-bed facility. And so we served three meals and two snacks a day. And so we had lots of different people cooking, staff and all kinds of different people, people that are from here, people that are not from here, all kinds. Most of them wash it down the sink. So that means you're sifting it out of the sewer system. So there needs to be some community education done on how to properly dispose of domestic cooking oils, too. I think that would be great. Then, on, next is bill three oh six. Um, that, oh, that's the pay-as-you-throw program. I like that idea. This is the only place I have ever lived that you had free garbage. Um, everybody charges for that everywhere. But on the other hand, I have to echo what the gentleman in Kona said this morning about the trashy roadsides. When I first moved here eleven or twelve years ago, I asked about that. I was like, that's insane. How can they let everybody just throw stuff for free? Um, and they explained to me that, well, when they did it, when they didn't do it before, people would just throw stuff everywhere. And I have to say that honestly, Hawaii is one of the dirtiest places I have ever lived. There is so much trash along the roadside, it's unbelievable to me. You know, we noticed that before I moved here, we visited here, and we noticed that right away. And we also noticed that it was not tourist trash. The things that we saw on the side of the roadsides were gallon bleached jugs and things that locals buy. These are not things that tourists buy and throw out the window. Um, so I think pay-as-you-throw, I'm sure there's a good reason for that, right, Ms. Smart? Like, we need to pay for more garbage and build a new landfill and that kind of stuff would be good. But on the other hand, why do I still have to drive my garbage down the hill and dump it there and pay you to do that? If I'm gonna pay for garbage, I want you to come to my house and pick it up. That's pretty, and that's jobs. All those people that were driving garbage to Kona, they can drive up to Kalamana City and pick my stuff up for me. I think that would be awesome. So that's what I think about that. On bill two sixty-six, which is the agricultural tourism, to be honest, I didn't understand what agricultural tourism was. I know what agriculture is. I spent every single summer growing up on a farm. Um, and I know what tourism is because I lived in Hawaii for a while now. Agrotourism kind of boggles my mind. Um, I, I, I see it as business taking over the needs of people. Well, we already have a zip line here, so we need Jack's Tour bus to go down this road. I think that's wrong. I, I thought at first that people maybe were flying over here to Hawaii to plant taro. I thought that's what agricultural tourism is. But zip lines on a horse farm, that's wrong. Um, and that's the end of the agenda. That's all my stuff. Mahalo.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Uh, Liz, your next testifier, please.
Okay, our last testifier is Mr. Christopher Ogul, speaking on bill one seven eight.
Thank you, good morning.
Hello, good morning, councilmen and council members. My name is Chris Ogul. I'm, I'm a resident of Kinoole, um, directly where this rezoning, uh, the owners of bill one seventy-eight wants to resort to their, uh, multifamily housing. Um, per prior meetings with my old, uh, council member, I've advised, um, he had spoken, we both had spoken about, um, our concerns. Um, I advised him, I said, you know, since the owners have, you know, come down and negotiated as far as the room counts, I said I was okay with it. However, I also advised him that the people that are directly impacted, which is the Soriano's, Coopers, my neighbor, um, the other two by their driveway, um, if they're against it, I also am gonna support them. So I made that very clear. Um, Mr. Cooper came around and advised that he had this whole petition as far as if they're against it. Uh, as far as me making a decision, I, I urge you guys to deny this multifamily housing approval of the owners that are coming in. Um, it's nothing personal. It's just our community is taking a bigger hit again. Um, there is our kupuna that is still residing on Kinoole. Mr. Onishi's family still resides on Kinoole as well, off-site, and utilizes that street as well. And I feel like safety for our kupuna is number one. Um, other than that, at this moment, I really don't, you know, I wanna support my community as far as what their general input is as far as not having this on our, on Kinoole street. Just to, just yesterday, actually, you know, just so happened I was following an ambulance on Kinoole. No pedestrians on the side of the road, but everybody had to clear out. And it was a barely squeezed right on by the intersection of Kinoole and Koeweelee. And more traffic, I'm not gonna say someone's gonna get hurt, God bless, but we just want it safe for all. And I feel additional people on Kinoole as far as having these fourteen units, three-bedroom each unit, is gonna add to that. Um, other than that, I urge you council members to vote no as far as approving this multifamily housing. Mahalo.
Mahalo, thank you for your testimony. Liz, do you have anyone testifiers on Hilo?
Um, no, Mr. Chair, that was our last testifier.
Okay, we do have one more here in Kona. If I could call Mr. Roger Harris to come forward. Uh, Mr. Harris is gonna speak on bill two eighty-nine. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Yagon and members of the county council.
Could you pull the mic a little closer to you? Thank you very much.
Hello?
There you go.
Haven't been here for a while. I'm speaking in support of Mrs. Ford's bill two eighty-nine, relating to council's support for, uh, expansion of higher education in West Hawaii. I'm with Palama Nui LLC. We own the land next to the community college site and the University of Hawaii site, and we have been working together on that for years, as you know. As Kelly Greenwell said, a growing, uh, community college and eventually greater expanded University of Hawaii facility in North Kona will be a really important component of the growing future of West Hawaii and essential. This is the area of the state that does not have anything like this. And to get it going with support of everybody is just gonna be wonderful. Um, very briefly, I'll say that we are aiming for an opening of phase one and one A of the community college in August of two thousand fourteen now. Um, Palama Nui LLC is creating and trenching for a pipeline to supply potable water to the site before that date, along with other utilities as we have promised in the past. And, uh, I don't wanna clear the deal, but I'm quite confident that pretty soon we're actually, uh, State of Hawaii will select a contractor and get going on construction. And when the groundbreaking occurs, we will all be happy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that update as well. Appreciate it. Okay, seeing that there's no further testifiers, council members, uh, uh, my intention is to take a few items, uh, out of order. Uh, first of all, we have resolution three oh one point twelve. I wanna take that first. That's on page four. And I do wanna take bill two sixty-six and bill three oh six, and then, uh, bill one seventy-eight and reso two ninety-three. And then we can go to regular business unless there's anything else. So if there's no objections, uh, let's go to page four. Madam Clerk, uh, reso three oh one point twelve, please.
Resolution three oh one dash twelve approves and adopts corrected maps of the special improvements to be constructed or improved, together with final details and plans and specifications for a water delivery system for the Kona Ocean View Properties subdivision. On August third, two thousand eleven, the council adopted resolution number ninety-nine dash eleven, which is a resolution of determination to create and define a water system improvement district for the Kona Ocean View Properties subdivision. Resolution number ninety-nine eleven directs the manager of the Department of Public, uh, Department of Water Supply to prepare a corrected map showing the exact location of the improvements referenced in the Kona Ocean View Properties Water System Improvements Exhibit A, as well as with the final details, plans, and specifications for the work to readily permit and encourage competition between contractors in the calling of bids and awarding of a contract for the special improvements referenced as job number one thousand eight dash nine three four, invitation for bids Exhibit B. Upon approval by the council, Exhibit A and Exhibit B shall be used as the basis for the calling of bids and awarding of a contract for the work as provided in resolution number ninety-nine eleven. This resolution was introduced by Mr. Palago and weighed by the P W P R C Committee.
Thank you, Palago.
Thank you, Chair Yagon. Motion to approve Resolution three oh one dash twelve.
Secondly, by Ms. Ford. Mr. Palago, you have a point.
Thank you, sir. I would like at this time to invite our design consultant, Ms. Nancy Burns, to the table. I understand we may also have the, uh, project engineer, Mr. Victoriano. Is he in Hilo?
He's actually here, but he's doing the student, um-
The student walkthrough?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Palago, we also have Carino Antonio, uh, the head of water supply. He's in Hilo as well.
Okay, if he could come up also, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Ms. Carino, if you could come forward to the table in Hilo. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Palago, you have a point.
Thank you. We've been here, uh, working on this project, the community has, for some nineteen long years. Uh, we're near conclusion, so I asked for everyone's support in this. But one who was instrumental in making sure we met all our details, uh, put the maps together to do the negotiation, was Ms. Nancy Burns. So, uh, she has some detailed work on some of the maps and the final plans. So I invited her up to give us a, a brief of that, please.
Okay, so I think the last time we met, we had, um, had a public meeting for, um, the residents of the community to go over the project and review their issues and concerns. Subsequent to that, I, um, modified the design to include wat- water meter locations that were more conducive to what they needed for the existing homes. Also coordinated with state highways to, um, resolve any issues they had because part of the water system will be in the state highway. Um, so at this point, I have state highways, um, a letter of approval. I have a water supply approval, and we're pretty much ready to go to bid. Uh, also, this project involves rural utility money, federal money, so we've got approval from them also.
Thank you for facilitating all those and bringing all the parties in place. Um, you're confident that we've met all our objectives and goals, and we're on good footing?
I am.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite, uh, Deputy of the Department of Water Supply, uh, uh, Antonio, if you would please give a comment on the department's position on this improvement district?
Thank you, Reno.
I'm in order. He's, uh, he's the head of the Department of, uh, Water Supply.
Oh, you are, yes, sir, you are. My apologies.
I believe, uh, my deputy has entered the room in Kona to, uh, people of order. But anyway, uh, of course, we are all in support of this project, and, uh, I commend, uh, Nancy Burns and our project manager, Ryan Victoriano, to, uh, uh, have this, uh, project move forward. Uh, just for your information, we do have some issues still with, uh, state highways that, but however, I believe we can, uh, resolve those issues as far as our, uh, use and occupancy of the state highway. Uh, but, uh, virtually, uh, the, uh, council will move this project forward. It's, you know, it's getting a long time coming. Uh, just for your information, uh, on the background information given by, uh, Ms. Doji, uh, our job number, I believe, is two zero zero eight. Uh, instead of one zero zero eight dash nine three four. Just wanted to make that correction. If you have any questions, I'm trying here to answer.
Thank you, Director. Again, I apologize for the mistake. Thank you. Deputy, would you have any comments to give at this time?
Uh, just, just to reiterate what, uh, Carino said, we're, we're in support of this project. Uh, thank you for your folks' patience, and I think we're at a point where, you know, we're, we're getting- you know, we're we're getting closer, so if we can move this forward, it would be terrific.
Thank you in the department for all your due diligence and uh for making this uh council feel comfortable in this project. We appreciate the department's effort. Engineer Quittoriano, would you like to give a comment? Tell us how your work has been with the community and how we can move this forward.
Uh so far, the committee has been really great even um supporting this project from the beginning. Um they've been showing up to our council meetings and that they have been um asking questions on the statuses. So we've been trying to update them as much as we can. So far, yeah, we we support this project.
We understand this council's mahalo to all the parties and all the people who have uh come in partnership for this project and for making this a success. Great example of community work, government work. Thank you. With that, Mr. Chair, I uh yield the floor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pilago. Um in regards, uh thank you for mentioning that correction, Mr. Carino. Uh we do have a listed on our resolution as job number one zero zero eight point slash nine three four, so obviously there's a typo there. Um uh certainly, I think we do need to correct it for the record, and and I think we can do a floor amendment uh because it is a typo. So uh Mr. Pilago, if you could make a.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do at this time make a floor amendment uh for council consideration to correct our job order number to the correct number stated by the uh director of Water Works.
Seconded by Ms. Ford. Any discussion on the amendment? Uh seeing that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Glass.
Hi.
Ms. Ford. Hi. Mr. Hoffman. All right. Mr. Iketa.
Hi.
Mr. Nishi.
Hi.
Mr. Pilago.
Hi.
Ms. Smart. Hi. Mr. Yoshimoto.
Hi.
Cherry Bong.
Hi.
Cherry Bong, you have nine eyes.
Thank you. Motion passes. I don't see that as significant, so um that's just a typo. So we're at the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? Let's check out in Hilo. Any discussion out of Hilo? Seeing that, how about here in Kona? About my congratulations to the department, uh certainly to the uh the community, cause uh as you know, this is a special improvement issue, they will be paying for this. And so this is something that is wonderful where they, you know, they uh will be paying through their taxes in order to get this project done. So congratulations to the community and certainly to uh Mr. Pilago uh and this council for moving this forward. It's a wonderful project and uh and thank you everyone for their cooperation in this. Uh Madam Clerk, go ahead and stick to it.
Mr. Glass.
Hi.
Mr. Glass.
Hi.
Ms. Ford. Hi. Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Iketa.
Hi.
Mr. Nishi.
Hi.
Mr. Pilago.
Hi.
Ms. Smart. Hi. Mr. Yoshimoto.
Hi.
Cherry Bong.
Hi.
Cherry Bong, you have nine eyes.
Thank you. Resolution three oh one dash twelve passes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Nancy, for your help on this. Much love. Thank you, Department of Water Supply. Uh council members, if there's no objections, let's go to page eight, Madam Clerk, uh Bill two sixty-six, please.
Bill two sixty-six draft three, planning director initiated, amends chapter twenty-five zoning code of the Ohi County Code nineteen eighty-three, two thousand five edition, amended relating to agricultural tourism. For Mayor William P. Canoye dated May twenty-fifth, twenty twelve, transmitting the above bill and enclosures with the favorable recommendation from Windward Planning Commission Chair Zendo Kern and Windward Planning Commission Chair Giles Giffen. The amendment specifically relates to agricultural tourism, amends article one, subsection twenty-five, one, five, B, by amending the definition of agricultural tourism and adds new definitions, amends article two, division seven, section twenty-five, two, seventy-one. Relating to applicability, plan approval required, amends article two, division seven, section twenty-five dash two, seventy-five, relating to plan approval application requirements for major agricultural tourism. Amends article two, division seven, section twenty-five dash two, seventy-six, relating to action on plan approval application. And amends article four, division one, section twenty-five, four, fifteen, relating to agricultural tourism. This bill is introduced by Mr. Hoffman.
Ms. Hoffman.
Uh yes, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, there is a, I'm sorry, there is a pending motion by Ms. Hoffman, so it is basically on the floor right now. So Ms. Hoffman, I'll give you the floor.
Um I think this board has some uh comments. Uh and then I have some comments that uh when we get uh back to after this floor finishes.
Uh Madam Clerk, if I could just double check with you, it's my understanding that we're gonna have a amendment on the floor. Uh now, this is a second and final reading, so if the amendment is made, that means it will be held over.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, Madam, uh Ms. Ford, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um I'm at this very, this moment, I'm just going to allude to the potential of this amendment. I've been getting a lot of calls and communications from the community on concerns they have on um this particular bill. It just doesn't quite go far enough to protect the communities from the detriment of ag tourism. Um I did make, I made it quite a substantial amendment that I'm just going to allude to. However, in communication with.
Don't allude to an amendment, then that's just on the floor, please.
Thank you. Well, it's hard to say the next thing if I can't talk about this.
Yeah, you can't tell a funny amendment.
Uh I've been in communication with the Department of Planning, um specifically Mr. Arai. And uh Mr. Arai, with the concurrence of the director, has requested uh or has agreed to a postponement of this particular situation until October seventeenth. Um and so at this moment, I would like to move to postpone um Bill two sixty-six draft three to the council meeting on October seventeenth.
Second. Okay, seconded by Mr. Hoffman. So we have on the floor a motion to postpone to October seventeen. Discussion on the motion to postpone.
I yield right now.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes, I I understand the uh many of the comments and concerns from the members of the community. And I'm gonna support the postponement. But I wanna make clear to the council members, as well as to the planning department, this is, this has been about a two and a half year effort that we've taken in in this regard. And we're never going to be able to dot every i and cross every t. And we have to determine that all the concerns that are going to be uh brought up, and and they're valid concerns. I'm not demeaning those, uh the quantity or quality of the concerns that people have. But we're never gonna be able to answer every single question. And I think on an issue of this nature, we have to be smart enough and cognizant enough that what we do put out, regardless of how many changes we make, we're not gonna satisfy everybody. So I I ask that uh we take the best shot we have. And and please understand that even if we do make some mistakes, even if some concerns can be adjusted, uh can be looked at in a different light, they can be adjusted in the future. Now, I'll support the postponement, but I don't want this to become one of these uh endless rounds of, oh, my goodness, you didn't consider my concern. Oh, my goodness, you didn't get that carb coming here in the most extreme possible case. So I don't think that's what we're here to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Um any further discussion on the motion to postpone out of Hilo? Anyone in Hilo? Seeing that, how about here in Kona? Uh let me just make just a couple of comments here before we go to the vote to postpone. Um certainly, uh through the discussion regarding this, I I support the bill. I support the intent of the bill. I think it will be a a very positive thing. However, there are some circumstances that we do need to be aware of. Certainly, I've had uh people in my district, especially the farmers out in YPO Valley. As you know, uh ladies and gentlemen, the road leading into YPO Valley is extremely treacherous, very narrow. And certainly is concerned in in regards to the holding capacity. Uh as you know, the uh the amount of traffic that would be allowed uh for business down in YPO, uh should this pass, uh is is a great concern to many of the uh um residents and farmers in YPO because we are already dealing with a very difficult situation out there in regards to getting people from uh from the top to the bottom floor. So uh we are working with the planning department to see what we can do. Uh that would address the concerns that this postponement is absolutely unnecessary, so thank you, Ms. Ford, for doing that. Uh seeing there's no further discussion, uh Madam Clerk, the motion on the floor is to postpone.
Mr. Glass.
Hi.
Ms. Ford. Hi. Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Iketa.
Hi.
Mr. Nishi.
Uh Mr. Nishi is uh not present.
Mr. Pilago.
Hi.
Ms. Smart. Hi. Mr. Yoshimoto.
Hi.
Cherry Bong.
Hi.
Cherry Bong, you have nine eyes.
Thank you. Motion to postpone passes. Thank you very much. Uh council members, if you don't mind, let's go to page five, Bill one seventy-eight, please. We're gonna hold up on Bill three oh six at this time, correct? Okay, let's go to page five, uh Bill one seventy-eight. Thank you.
Bill one seventy-eight, amends section twenty-five, eight thirty-three, city of Hilo, zoning act article eight, chapter twenty-five, zoning code of the Ohi County Code nineteen eighty-three, two thousand five edition, by change of the district classification from single-family residential to thousand square feet R M ten to multiple-family residential, three thousand square feet R M three at YKS, Hilo, Ohi, covered by tax map key two, two, thirty-eight, seventeen, applicant Thomas Meiner and Susan Porchak. Area forty-two thousand six hundred sixty square feet. For Mayor William P. Canoye dated January nineteen, twenty twelve, transmitting the above bill and enclosures, the favorable recommendation from Windward Planning Commission Chair Zendo Kern. The applicants request a change of zone from single-family residential, ten thousand square feet R M ten, to multiple-family residential, three thousand square feet R M three, to allow the construction of fourteen-unit apartment complex to provide housing for students attending the years of Ohi and Hilo. This bill is introduced by Mr. Hoffman and approved by the P W P R C committee.
Ms. Hoffman?
Move to approve Bill one seventy-eight at first reading.
Seconded by Ms. Ford. You know, I'm sorry, I know Mr. Nishi. Is Nishi in the council chair? Is that what this is his district? Did he, did he wanna hold up on this uh uh? Oh, he's there, okay. Um, Ms. Hoffman, did you want to for first, or I can turn over to Mr. Nishi?
Um I'd rather have uh Mr. Nishi, uh since it is in his district, to uh to comment on this before I make any other comment.
Okay, I see, Mr. Nishi. Then, Mr. Nishi, you have the floor if you if you'd like, at this time?
What's that mean? What's that mean?
Uh we're on Bill one seventy.
Chair. Um we wanted to maybe take a primary basis because um there's some um information that needs to be copied and passed out to the council members.
Okay, either that or we could table this. Why don't we table this? Can you let me know when you're ready, sir?
Yeah, okay.
That would be better?
Yeah.
Okay, can I have a motion to table, please? Move by Mr. Hoffman, seconded by Ms. Ford. Any discussion on motion to table Bill one seventy-eight? Seeing that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Glass.
All right.
Ms. Ford. Hi. Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Iketa.
Hi.
Mr. Nishi.
Hi.
Mr. Pilago.
Hi.
Ms. Smart. Hi. Mr. Yoshimoto.
Hi.
Cherry Bong.
Hi.
Cherry Bong, you have nine eyes.
Thank you. Uh Bill one seventy-eight is tabled at this time. Uh, Mr. Nishi, just let me know when you're ready, and we'll go proceed to your bill.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, let's go um page three, uh Resolution two ninety-three, uh Mr. Hoffman?
Resolution two nine three twelve accepts the dedication of Makana Aloha plays a portion of tax map key three six eight twenty-six one three five Kalani, a state subdivision, situated at Waikato Loa, District of South Kohala Island, County and State of Ohi, from Daniel Brent Holden. Daniel Brent Holden is the heir of dedicating the roadway lot, including also putting improvements to the county of Hawaii for public road and drainage purposes containing an area of one point five seven one acres. The improvements have been inspected and approved by the Department of Public Works and have received dedication approval from the Departments of Water Supply, Planning, and Environmental Management. This resolution was introduced by Mr. Glass and approved by the P W P R C committee.
Mr. Glass?
Move to approve Resolution two ninety-three, that's off and closed file on all communications. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Iketa. Uh, Mr. Glass, uh did you wanna make any comments to this resolution?
Let's just move.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
That's a great idea. It's taken ten years to get here. Let's vote.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Glass.
Hi.
Ms. Ford. Hi. Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Iketa.
Hi.
Mr. Nishi.
Hi.
Mr. Pilago.
Hi.
Ms. Smart. Mr. Yoshimoto.
Hi.
Cherry Bong.
Hi.
Cherry Bong, you have nine eyes.
Thank you. Bill two, uh Resolution two nine three dash twelve uh passes. Um let's see, that's the only items that I had, people have requested to take out of order. Do we get the uh Bill one seventy off the table? Oh, I'm sorry, here, oh, okay. Let's go to uh Bill two eighty-seven, draft two. What page is that, uh, Ms. Smart? Okay, page six, uh bottom of the page, uh Bill two eighty-seven, draft two, please.
Bill two eighty-seven, draft two, amends chapter two, article twenty-five, the Ohi County Code nineteen eighty-three, two thousand five edition, amended, relating to appropriation of funds to nonprofit organizations. The solidarity standards for the appropriation of funds to nonprofit organizations provide programs and services which the county has determined to be in the public's interest. I propose the following amendments, amends article twenty-five, section two dash one three six seven, by deleting the definition of purchase of service and any reference throughout this article, amends section two, one, three, seven, three, relating to eligible organizations. Amends section two dash one three eight relating to conditions for grants. Amends section two dash one three nine relating to procedure for awarding grants. Relates section two dash one four zero relating to procedure for awarding purchase of service agreements. Amends section two dash one four two relating to records reporting of fiscal accountability requirements. Amends section two dash one four two point one relating to rules. Relates section two dash one four two point two relating to interim procedures for awarding grants and service agreements. This bill was introduced by Ms. Smart and approved by the H S S P S committee.
Ms. Smart?
Move to approve Bill two eighty-seven, draft two, and close file on all related communications.
Seconded by Mr. Hoffman, please, Ms. Smart.
Uh move to amend Bill two eighty-seven with the contents of commu- communication eight zero one point four.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Hoffman, please, um, Smart, all of the amendments.
Um this amendment is um to address some of the concerns council members had on this bill in addition to correcting some grammatical errors. Um just going through the the three amendments here, uh the first amendment, we inadvertently left uh the new added section of number six out by not um properly formatting the ands. So we added a semicolon and deleted an and and added another and, so that's just grammatical. The second section, this was to address concerns um regarding um the distribution of contingency relief funds. Uh we deleted the sec- the first sentence in section C. Um and if you notice that in section A, we left the original wording of district contingency relief, which is how the process has operated. I understand we don't have contingency relief funds at this point in time. That doesn't mean that they won't come back in the future. Um section three, what we tried to do here is um thanks to the help of L R B pointing out some discrepancies in some of our wording. And by trying to simplify things, we um complicated it to some extent on accident. So we tried to fix that. Um in discussions with finance department, there was no need to have an interim report. Um so uh even though that language was already existing, it is not necessary, so we struck that. Um and then we just clarified who has to do the report within sixty days of June thirtieth. The reason for that is because we have the other grants section. Those grants may be awarded at any time during the year. So having a reporting requirement of sixty days after June thirtieth does not make sense for those types of grants. So this is clarifying that the final report is only for the operational budget grants that the council uh puts together and authorizes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Ford, you have the floor?
Thank you.
This is all the amendment.
Yes, sir. I support this amendment. I am very relieved that, especially with section two striking out the uh information of council districts contingency relief funds could be hijacked in some way. I think the other amendments are excellent, and I hope we all support this.
Thank you. We do have uh the AM South with Hilo as well, if anyone have any questions. Uh anything on Hilo? Uh any council members at this time on the amendment? Seeing that, here in Kona?
Um yes, just real quickly, I just wanted to thank Finance so much for their help yesterday in finalizing all these amendments. And the Finance Department as a whole has been um fabulous in helping draft this bill overall. But thanks especially for their very calm response to draft these amendments.
Okay, very good. Um seeing there's no further discussion on the amendment? Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, um, Mr. Nishi.
This might be for the main motion. I'll wait for it. Take it.
Okay, any further discussion on your amendment? Seeing that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Glass.
Hi.
Ms. Ford. Hi. Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Iketa.
Hi.
Mr. Nishi.
Hi.
Mr. Pilago.
Hi.
Ms. Smart. Hi. Mr. Yoshimoto.
Hi.
Cherry Bong.
Hi.
Cherry Bong, you have nine eyes.
Thank you. Motion amend passes. So with the main motion as amended, Mr. Nishi, shall you be the floor?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Diana? It's not the same as that. Oh. You have this, I'm. I guess I have, you know, on page. It was um. Looks like it says page two, but it's not page four. It's like page three. Section two dash one two seven. With the organizations.
Yes.
In number three. It was added for public company welfare, for all the people and. So that's.
That was added from how the original county code is now. And um I think we're just um elaborating on what types of nonprofit organizations can apply. It still have to be a nonprofit.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Smart?
I just wanted to um answer Mr. Nishi's question. The reason we added that is because we are already awarding grants um addressing those issues, but the code doesn't specify that it's allowable, so we're just trying to match an existing situation.
Thank you. Good question. Mr. Pilago, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This opportunity to congratulate Ms. Smart and her staff and L R B for a job well done. This is the first significant legislation in respect to code change that this council has initiated uh to facilitate and empower our uh grantee process. So congratulations, Mr. Pilago.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pilago. We're at the main motion as amended. Any further discussion here in Kona? Any discussion out of Hilo? Seeing that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Glass.
Hi.
Ms. Ford. Hi. Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Iketa.
Hi.
Mr. Nishi.